Forty-one is closed. Comments by members of council. Councilwoman Ortega.
Thank you. Mr. President, I appreciate all of your efforts in bringing this forward and, you know, trying to address what I think is a great need in our community. I hope that we can look at a one-week delay that gives us the opportunity to identify some of these key priorities that should be in a process that ensures voter confidence that it is not just a blank check to the Parks and Rec Department. And given the authority that's been given by the charter to the manager of Parks and Rec, they could choose to put the money into one project or, you know, create it however they want to apply it. And I think by having some criteria that really kind of defines how we prioritize these monies is really critical to people having that confidence that there's, you know, some of these key issues are going to be addressed. Equity being one, geographic disbursement being another, taking care of parks that, you know, have had such a state of disrepair across the city is another key priority. I mean, looking at some of our medians in the city where, depending on where you're at, some are maintained very well and others are not maintained at all. And so it's that equitable distribution of the resources. This is new money. It's a new day. It's different than what exists today, and so we could create it however we want to. And it gives us an opportunity to be a little bit more thoughtful. So my recommendation is that we do a one-week postponement and allow for the opportunity to just have that check-in with some additional folks to identify some of those process issues and be able to, you know, I want to get there to be able to support this, but without that, I'm real concerned. I feel really disconnected from that process in terms of ensuring that the public really gets to weigh in. And, you know, that's regardless of whatever input that we've already had into Blueprint and Game Plan. I mean, Game Plan is a long-term look at the needs of the city. It was not intended for us to find a check and just immediately try to knock out every one of those projects. It was to look at the long-term need of the city. And, you know, if we had this conversation with every other city agency, they would all have a list of priorities that they would want to see funded. And so, you know, the fact that this was kind of in isolation of this body really being able to weigh in on policy priorities for the city, independent of the budget process that we normally go through, I guess, I just, I'm debating whether to just move a motion that we delayed for a week, but I want to
Let's let everybody have a comment first.
...hear comments from other folks. But, you know, I feel that strongly about the process of having public input that we really do need to delay this to weigh in on what some of those key criteria are, that, you know, even if, per the comments made by the city attorney, if we adopted a separate ordinance that defined a process, we don't really have the authority to dictate that because that authority is already given to the manager of the Parks and Rec Department. And so how do we get there, independent of being able to fold it in to this process here tonight and have some serious commitments to getting that done? So anyway, that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ortega. Councilman Espinoza.
Well, I applaud the efforts to sort of, I don't know, conflagate, or I don't know what the right word is right now. It escapes me to confuse what is a simple ask of the voters into something far, far more complex. Yes, I understand that this would be a tax burden that would then subsequently, in the future years or with all the ballot measures coming forward, that this would increase tax burden to a point where we might hit a breaking point sooner. The fact that we have education, transportation, mental health, and parks on this ballot, if this goes through, speak to the need that these things weren't addressed in $5 billion worth of other expenditures by this city. And the fact that we don't have a housing, we didn't have a housing component in the geo bond, and we don't have a housing component, I mean, housing bond, is because we worked with this administration, or others worked with this administration. And to Councilman Clark's point, the administration isn't the most flexible or amenable to these sorts of things. So sometimes people have to act, and I'm glad to hear that, Brandon, people are prepared to act because I know my constituents wildly supported the Green Roost Initiative, and they would wildly support this as well. So the, my frustration is, is that we have, you know, this talk towards the end about equity is important, but demographic shift, and we can't do a plan based on who is there. The park is permanent. It gets built and it stays there, regardless of who lives around it, who makes up that community. Otherwise, my park at 38th and Navajo, Osage Park before it was Columbus Park, to, and, you know, and catered to the Italian community there, or the Scottish community that was before that, or the Latino community that put in the kiosko, or who's there now, which is neither of the above, but some of the above. So we can't, you know, parks are one of those things that is more about, I mean, not demographics, but geographics, and access and amenities, you know? These are physical things that these dollars are intended to address. And we have plenty of public input. There's council representation for every one of these parks, except for the mountain parks, but it's all of us. There's two at-larges that will also represent. Each one of those council members has a Prab member, and there's an essential component of this to go to Prab, you know? And so, yeah, it's not perfect, but guess what? Six months after the vote, we can tweak it still. So, and then if it's onerous and it kills, you know, the city because there's too much taxes in the future, council can 86 it completely, just go to zero. We can't up it, but we can lower it, and that was made very clear. So, you know, it's just, it is, it is just a matter of getting it on the ballot, and it is not as bad as it could be. Sorry, Brandon. You know, we know what that looks like. This is not that. It is, it is, it is been thought about, it is considered, it has the mechanisms, and it is not going to be onerous to have it. We have enough need, enough demand that we could figure out how to navigate a struggle if we're not, we should have the foresight. I mean, if this gets voted in November, we can, we may, when I got on a council in July, we made tweaks to our budget before the end of the year. We can make tweaks to our budget to start to capture this, even if it's sort of premature, and still get it to Prab, and still get community input. That is not a slow process when there is this much need. So that was my deviation because I was frustrated because I just get that way. But, you know, this, we already talked about that. So our standard operating procedure right now is, you know, I mean, this idea of development impact fee, I'm all for it. Sorry, developers. I think there, you have an impact, and we should be addressing that, and I'm proud to support anybody's efforts towards that end. But when you do a developer impact fee, there's still going to be pressure to locate it, co-locate it relative to those developments. I mean, that, you know, Stapleton didn't put their parks outside of Stapleton, you know? They put them in their development. That's smart. That's logical. Our standard operating procedure to let developers pay for a new park construction is part of their metro district, you know, and then turns over to the city after the fact. That, too, is specific to that community. Those things are not happening with this proposal. This is equitable by its very nature if we put pressure on the administration to address those needs, and that's our responsibility as legislators and as taxpayers and as the electorate in this city. When we did the Metropolitan Football Stadium District, that'll be a hearing we have in the end of this month, we did a tax just like this for a football stadium, just one, not 300, one football stadium. And so for a couple of dozen men, men only, to play on, and half of them are from out of town. You know? And the field can only be used for a fee. It is not a free field, and your tax dollars went to that. So for a little more than double that amount, you can tax, we can support to expand and improve a network of over 300 parks and 20,000 acres that are available to everyone. And that's, and that's our, I mean, and that, and the fact that our lands are not exclusive, and there is no goal, and there is a goal to make parks proximate, part of this is a goal to make parks proximate to every resident, addresses my very normal reservations about the use of sales tax, because this is a far more egalitarian use than a stadium, or a stock show, or a convention center, or any of the other things we use tax dollars for. So I won't continue to go on my tirade. It's just that this is, this is a fair thing to put before the voters. And yeah, it'll be a lot of asks, and people will really have to dig deep. And my own personal preference is we put it on mental health, and we put it on parks. I believe in mobility, but this is tied too much with roadway. I would vote that down and then come back, but we'd make it very clear. So that's me rambling on a whole bunch of ballot measures. This one is one that I wholeheartedly support just getting to the voters because the community, just like other needs, have asked, and I'm happy to help with a housing portion as well. But that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. It's a weird night to be in this chair. As Councilwoman Knech already pointed out, generally, as the bill sponsor, I would have gone first in my comments. I was going to defer to go last, but I'm now going to jump in just to say a few things. I appreciate the conversation, just to speak specifically to the conversation about the delay. I appreciate that conversation, and it's hard because every time we talk about something that isn't easy, which is pretty much everything we talk about, there's always an argument to delay, and it's hard to tell what is behind that. Some people who are going to vote no ask for a delay because it gives more time to convince other people to vote no. And sometimes there are real and legitimate reasons to delay. For me, the person who I am, everything that has gone into my life to define me is about equity in parks. I took literally thousands and thousands of kids on field trips to the South Platte River. I was on top of Ruby Hill when there were bullet holes in the playground and the trees had been tagged, and when a car pulled up at 10 o'clock in the morning and started doing donuts, and I had to run for shelter with 60 kids trying to add positive engagement and introduce kids and create a space in our third-largest park, right behind Wash Park, where there was not equity. There was not the investment that we were making. We weren't able to make that investment, and we've started to right some of those wrongs. I took a group of teenagers who'd been expelled from the Denver Public Schools, and half of them had ankle bracelets on, and they showed up to do the field trip that I usually did with fourth graders where we were going to go and pan for gold and look for crod ads, and they were all swearing left and right and mad about this, except for as soon as we started turning over rocks, and they found their first crod ad, and we found a praying mantis climbing on a tree, and they were then posing for pictures, doing, you know, like gangster photos with a praying mantis on their shoulder. Everything changed because, for the first time, they had access. I, for me and who I am and the commitments that I made to the community that was looking at running this and to the community that has spent their lives waiting for this moment, waiting for a council that had the courage to at least take this on and refer it to the voters, I can't get here and then delay. Because if it's not enough who I am and the fiber of me to believe that I will work, I will work with our equity partners, I will work with everyone between now and hopefully when the voters pass this to address these, I don't think these are things that need to be solved in the ordinance. And for people who have waited decades of their lives to get to this moment, we need to have a vote. And if it is the will of this council to vote this down, then I can go back and I can talk to the community, and I can say I delivered on my promise to get it as far as I could, and we can sit and decide whether they want to take this directly to the ballot or take a second shot and refile it and take a couple extra weeks. So as the sponsor of the bill, I am 100% committed to solving the things that have been brought up. I don't think that they need to be solved here. I think that we need to give this community the answer about whether we are ready to do this or not, and then give them the time to work on this for November if we are. So that was my comment, just because I don't want us to go too far down the path of delay or not delay without people knowing where I am on that issue. Councilman Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. If this is an either-or vote about housing our people or expanding dollars invested in our parks, I'm voting no on this. But it's not that. And I think the Denver electorate should be under no illusions that whether it's sales tax or bonds or impact fees or tourism fees, we need more money for housing, we need more money for transportation. And so I think this does need to go to the voters, but the voters need to be aware that there are choices that they're going to have to make depending on how they feel they can spend. This is on $10. If you're making a $10 purchase, it's going to be $10.03. If you're making a $100 purchase, it's going to be $100.25, and $1,000, it's $1,002.50. Different people in this room tonight, and certainly watching this on TV and amongst the electorate, are going to have differing opinions on how that impacts them. I'm willing to commit to spending this extra amount of money and also willing to consider some additional requests on other needs that our city has. Right now, in my district, we're looking at developments that will come, one particular development that will come before council, one that didn't need to come before council on a total of about 24, 25 acres of former CDOT property that the city was unable to buy because we don't have any money to make those level of purchases. Now, I don't know that I would have recommended that we buy 25 acres and make it all parkland. There's other needs. I would definitely want part of that parcel, which it's projected to have for affordable housing. But it would have been nice if we at least had the option to say, you know what? Why don't we take five acres and buy that for parkland and then look at developing housing and retail and commercial on the rest? To date, we don't have that option. This is not a case of taking a park system that is A1 primo shape and really pushing it to the next level. We've got enormous deferred maintenance on our park system right now. We, as has been stated in a number of ways, we need to add additional acreage. This is extremely important. I mean, we're looking, the Parks Department right now is considering a major change to our alcohol policy in the parks, where once it was 3.2 beer, now we're looking at possibly allowing full-strength beer and wine in all our parks. We're looking at adding the ability to permit hard liquor and the sale of hard liquor and beer and wine in 180 additional parks. Right now, we have permitting of that sort in about 20 of our parks. We have, we don't have the rangers to begin to enforce the existing laws in our parks. We need additional humans, we need additional land, we need additional policies. Councilman Clark, I think you're right on the money in the need for this. And as far as equity goes, if previous generations had not thought to give us Paco Sanchez Park, we wouldn't be prepared to do the improvements that are being done in that part of town. That being said, I would support a week, this is my view. I would, because I hear the questions that have been raised tonight, and, you know, I really think for the, at least the vast bulk of us on council, I have a hunch that we're preaching to the choir on the need to expand our parkland. If we take a week, I would be stunned if we didn't end up with a stronger bill that passed with a greater majority. That's just the way I assess where council is on this right now. Yeah, you know, we're not going to improve equity unless we come up with extra dollars, that's for sure. But I do think we could strengthen this bill so the voters outside this room that may have more questions would be more likely to vote for it. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Black.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be supporting this tonight. I support everything you've just said in your comments. Councilman Flynn, I just want to bring up the Trust for Public Lands Park Score Index, and it may surprise you to know that my district is actually the worst off for parks. Councilwoman Sussman is second, and yours is third. So I encourage everyone to be acquainted with some facts. I do have two golf courses in my district, but they are not open to the public, so they don't count. So I don't have a lot of parks in my district. My own neighborhood doesn't have a park, and 20 years ago, I personally raised the money and I worked with Denver Public Schools to landscape a play, or a school playfield, and it was a big battle with DPS because they don't always play nice for that sort of thing, no offense, Happy, but you know what I'm talking about? And today, it serves as our community park. And without that, we, no one had a 10 or 15 or 20-minute walk to a park. I have another neighborhood that is undergoing great, great density near the, between the Yale and the Colorado Light Rail stations, hundreds of new units are going in, and I've met, when I first was elected, I met with Trust for Public Lands. We talked about it. They said absolutely there is a need, and since then, we've had hundreds of new units built in that neighborhood. I've had Happy Haynes out, Scott Gilmore, the mayor, that neighborhood needs a park. And as far as the priorities of this council, at our retreat we had last winter, I suggested that all of the priorities for the city are all related to growth, and I very much supported that day that parks should be a priority. And I think Councilman Clark and I might have been the only ones who voted for it, maybe Councilwoman Gilmore, too. It didn't make the top cut, but green space is a huge need for a city that is getting more and more dense. And so I don't, I don't think it's accurate to say it wasn't one of our priorities, but because it was for some of us. I also have read the draft game plan, which has been alluded to a lot tonight, and it does indeed talk about a lot of these values that all the speakers are talking about, and also more parks. I've met with TPL a number of times, and I'm very familiar with all of their studies, and they're, they have a park score for the 100 largest cities in the United States. Councilman Clark referred to this earlier. Denver's spot on that list has fallen to 26. Aurora, Colorado, is 20th. Of the top cities, they spend, some of them, more than twice as much per resident on their parks than we do in Denver, Colorado. And that's not a coincidence that they would be top when we're spending half or less than half, that their park score would be so much higher than ours. Most of them have a dedicated funding source, and almost all of them have a Parks Foundation, which is something I'm also working on, hello, all of you right here, which serves a complementary purpose and is also recommended by Game Plan. So just want to say thank you for having the courage to do this when a lot of people told you not to, but I am happy to support it, and I know that you will work hard to address some of the issues that people have brought up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Black. Councilwoman Gilmore.
Thank you, President Clark. I have spent, like Councilman Clark, my almost entire adult life educating children in communities about nature and the environment, and I did that for almost 20 years. And I share with you a short little story because we had a parcel of land in the Montbello Community, which is in Councilman Herndon's district, that was five and a half acres of land. It was zoned for up to an eight-story, high-density apartment building. The catch was that it was directly across the street from another very high-density apartment building that had a very high crime rate and lots of different issues, and there was no money to buy this five and a half acres. So my small nonprofit started talking to Great Outdoors Colorado, the Trust for Public Lands, anybody and everybody that we could talk to, we started talking with them. But it was still a very, very heavy lift for a small, community-based organization to try to coddle together $1.6 million to buy this five and a half acres of land. And the reason that we wanted to buy this five and a half acres of land was not to benefit the nonprofit, it was to benefit the youth and the families that we serve. Because every single time we would take a group of students from Montbello, Commerce City, or Aurora, we'd take them up to the mountains, we'd take them to someplace to recreate. Every time that we were driving out of our own neighborhood, they were looking around saying, why don't we have the beautiful parks, the beautiful trails? Why don't we have this in our neighborhood? Why do we have to get into 15-passenger vans and leave our home to go see nature and to see beauty and to reap the benefits of being outdoors? We shouldn't have to. And at the end of the day, nature doesn't discriminate. Nature doesn't discriminate. So if we don't invest in future generations, in our generation, by buying parkland now, we're not going to have it, and we're not going to get it back, and we can't have asphalt parking lots that we're trying to reclaim and create great wildlife habitat or parks. It just, you're talking about exponential costs instead of doing this the right way first. And so with that short story, in my entire career as an outdoor educator, before I was on city council, this is an investment in youth, families, seniors. It's an investment in our neighborhoods, in having beautiful green spaces. It's an investment in health, our mental health, our physical health, our spiritual health, an opportunity in our fast-paced lives to disconnect lives to disconnect and just be outdoors, and to recharge. It's an investment in communities of color. This is an investment in equity. Because we don't have certain amenities that other parts of the city have for a multitude of different reasons. And we could debate that for days on end, why that has occurred. Or, we can do something right now and refer this to the ballot for the voters to actually decide. This is an investment in the environment. We're going to have more trees for air quality. We're going to be able to mitigate the heat island effect. We're going to have better water quality. And we haven't even started talking about the community gathering spaces that our parks create. Talk about equity. In communities of color, community gathering spaces are basically non-existent. Our parks become a great community gathering place with a beautiful shelter, with grills to have a cookout, to have a barbecue, culture, art, mobility, greenways, trails. And we have, you know, around food sustainability, I don't believe as a city, we have fully been able to explore how parks could help us with food sustainability and access, because we don't have enough. We don't want to take an entire beautiful field and try to grow food when kids are trying to play soccer. So, the dueling needs are too much. But if we had more resources to buy more parkland, we could maybe really think out of the box. And if there's affordable housing projects, how do we partner with those projects and make sure that their green space is adequate, that there's trail connections, so that folks that are living in a high-density unit can actually get out of their unit safely and go walk, or bike, or ride, and have a park very close to them. And so, that's all of these reasons beyond, you know, wanting to have a little bit more say. Every year, each council office creates a CIP list. We utilize what lists we get from parks, but then we add to it. We constantly are adding to it, because our constituents are sending us concerns, ideas, that we add to that CIP list. And so, I feel like there's plenty of different touchpoints for us to ensure that the voters will know that this money is used in a responsible way going forward. And so, I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you, President Clark, for your tireless work and persistence in making sure that this goes forward. But I feel comfortable making sure that the voters have a chance to really look at this and weigh in on it. Thank you, President Clark.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gilmore. Councilman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I've been waiting to see something like this happen, especially with our parks. You know, of all the uses and functions of local government, this, parks is essential. Parks is essential. We have to maintain it. And we can't rely on bake sales for the things that, that make us, that make us healthy, right? And that are important to us. That was the case with Cuatro Vientos. But it didn't come automatically. I don't want some, I don't want folks in this chamber to think that, in the narrative that is Cuatro Vientos, and how were you able to get Cuatro Vientos Park, was it some automatic, or, it was born out of a recession. And those of us that were around in these chambers during the recession know that there was not a dime to be spent anywhere. And when I went through the council process, there was a, when I said, "Hey, look, we need to pave alleys, and we need to take care of our parks, and we need to maintain our infrastructure," it was met with the reply that we don't have diamonds in our pockets. And to my reply was, well, all we're asking for is a little bit of fertilizer and some asphalt. We've had to struggle to get these parks. As a matter of fact, it wasn't park money that first paid and funded for the bill for Cuatro Vientos. It was a different administration. It was a process over three mayors. I don't know how many different councils or iterations of the council. And we had a, because the '08 bond, the '07, '08 bond was not kind to Council District Three or the West Side at all. We didn't have a representative sitting on council at the time. And I guess it was just easy to pull a fast one on us on the West Side. We made it a point, not to take $400,000 that we moved from the bond with another, some other money from OED to make it happen with the Trust for Public Land. We shouldn't have to rely on outside third parties to fund our public parks. We shouldn't have to rely on our fees to pay for something that absolutely should be free to anybody to enjoy. We are still very lopsided in this city. Golf courses don't count as parkland. They don't. I'm sorry. I can't go throw the ball around. I get kicked out of a golf course. We've tried it once. You can't. We have to be equitable around this city to do it. And the only, the beginning phases are to make sure that we have the resources to get it done. And it's also, we also have to make sure we have the landscape architects. I tell you, so many, of the park acreage that we have in Council District Three, so much of it can be redesigned. And so much of it is on, is in the queue, years, years away from just getting designs done. Because we just don't have the, the resources to actually fund the personnel to do it. Right? So, if we are serious about our parks, if we love quoting Robert Speer, and demonstrating how much we are in love with our park system, then let's pay for it. Right? And so, this is a good way to do it. However, we are now in a, we are not in a post-race conscious society. We are constantly trying to talk about equity in this city, in every sense of the way, whether it be economically speaking, whether it be, you know, racially, whether it be gender. And we still have a lot of work to do. Right? And yes, these neighborhoods will change. And the makeup of these neighborhoods, they change in Denver. But at least the one constant thing is our, our public infrastructure, that which we can do together that we will not be able to do individually, and that is local government. And it is our duty to make sure that it's equitable. So, you know, do I support this? Yes. Do I support it moving forward? Absolutely. Do I support extending it a week so we can have a process, so we can make sure that we're working all the dings out of it, to make sure there's an equitable component? If there is language that we can use that's nuanced languages, that, language that reflects modern-day governance? Absolutely. But remember, at the end of the day, and I could, I could say this, that this, this, this Parks Administration has been very good to the district. They've been very responsive for the last, you know, five years, six years. I said, since we've all had come into the mayorship, they listen to our district, and just tell us what to do. Right? And so, we have the gains that we've had in our parks. But at the end of the day, our policies should survive whatever administration, whatever employees are in the city, it should, they should live to make sure that there's equity. We may have equity now, but we may not have equity later. That's why the policy is important. That's why the discussion has to be much more than just something spiritual in, in the chambers. So, I definitely get it. So, if there is a friendly amendment in the coming weeks, I'm down for it. If there is a small delay, hopefully a short delay, and I say short, because I just want it short, sure. But let's get this thing moving forward. All right? Let's, let's, let's run our park system. The one thing I will say is, it survives every mayor, it survives every council, it'll survive every administration. But the one thing that is constant is good old-fashioned organizing. And that's what we owe Cuatro Vientos to, that's what we owe Paco Sanchez to, that's what we owe the Rec Center to. It doesn't just happen because some councilperson, or some, you know, somebody that touched their heart in a decision-making position. It happened because of good old-fashioned organizing. So, if you don't have parks in your district, organize that district. You will, as soon as those votes start, as soon as those voters start coming to these chambers, reminding you and your colleagues and the administration that they're serious with their vote. So, thank you. I support a move forward. I'm supportive of a, whatever, as long as it gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't mean to get into a race to the bottom of the misery index with Councilwoman Black, who always, who always talks about the closed Kmart in her district. And I always point out that at least I have a closed Target in my district. But, with all due respect to the Trust for Public Lands, our own City Parks Department gave me the following figures as far as in equity. And Council District Two has six developed park acres per thousand. Council District Three, Councilman Lopez's District Five, developed park acres per thousand residents. Council District Four has nine developed park acres, not counting golf courses, per district. And only Councilman News Central Denver District has lower, and that was four acres per thousand, probably due to its density and smaller area as a result of the density. So, there's definitely a need to look at our underparked areas. And I don't mean to exclude the southeast Denver as well, because I think the Trust for Public Land used a different yardstick, which was parks within a 10-minute walk. And that's a different yardstick. And by that measure, I think southwest Denver is pretty, pretty much inequitably treated as well. I am, I'm generally supportive of forwarding this to the voters, because this is truly a municipal purpose, as Councilman Lopez says. Providing for parks, among other things, is, is one of the basic city municipal functions. And so, this is well within the realm and the ability of our voters to make the decision whether they want to tax themselves to do this. As Councilman Clark knows, however, I've had some, some anxiety over the choice of the sales tax, as the most regressive choice we can use. And yes, I know that in Denver, a lot of our sales taxes come from visitors, and from people from outside the city, and not just from residents. But I do think about, when I mentioned Brentwood, not have, there's no park at all in Brentwood. And that's one of my more struggling working family areas that probably don't want to dig deeper in their pocket when they go to the store and buy school clothes for their kids, and, and pay a little bit more in taxes. I think the last time I actually looked at this, it's very outdated, maybe 15 years ago, when I was writing a story about a sales tax going on the ballot, that the average household in Denver, at that time, spent about $36,000 in taxable retail transactions. If that's true, and let me round it up to $40,000, it's probably in excess of that now. And I know a lot of our households don't even make that much in total, let alone spend that much on retail sales. But a household that spends $40,000 in, in taxable retail sales, under this measure, would pay $100. We usually have, when we have bond issues on the ballot, we're usually able to say with great specificity how much a mill levy increase would mean to the average house worth $300,000 or whatnot. So, I just wanted to throw out there that, that an average household that spends $40,000 in retail sales would spend, would pay about $100 annually into this fund, just for some perspective. I don't know how I feel about a one-week delay, and I don't know if it's, if it's needed. But there's one thing that we could do here on the floor right now, as far as a very simple amendment, that would help me get to a higher comfort level with the equity issue. And that would be, if I could, Mr. President, just, I have a simpler one, actually. So, we have, we have competing friendly amendments. In, on page five, under I, Planning, if, what would really help me, and I think maybe given some of the other remarks here tonight, would really help me, and maybe others, feel that we could have more of a role in here, would be if that paragraph included, when the Parks and Rec Department does the five-year plan, it doesn't just submit it to the Prab and to the council, but it actually submits it for a required public hearing and adoption by the council, as we do neighborhood plans. That would then mean that we don't just receive the plan in an email at some point, say, "Oh, thank you very much," and we read it. But it actually comes here for a public hearing, and, and then we vote on it. And I could offer that very simply in a floor amendment, if that's acceptable to the other members, and maybe subsequent members who speak might weigh in on that, to let me know if there would be support for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Brooks?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to say to, before I start, just to everybody who's here, I appreciate you being here. Appreciate you paying for parking, and going through security, and sitting in these hard seats. Everyone that I see in these seats right now are some of our most staunch advocates in the city, either on both sides of this issue. And you guys are the reason we're going to be great as a city. So, I appreciate you being here. Mr. President, I'll just say this to you, that I love the story about, and Councilwoman Gilmore saying the same thing. I love the story, stories about what we used to do with, what you guys used to do with young people. And I did the same thing, taking young people up in the mountains for 10 years of my life, and allowing them to enjoy, you know, the beauty and open space, and get out of the hood of northeast Denver, to enjoy that. And I think everything you said is spot on. You know, but that's not the issue before me tonight. All of those things are right, but that is not the issue that doesn't help me to get to yes tonight. I think the Parks Department, over my last seven years, has improved over 95% of the parks in District Nine. And it has transformed our district. And I want to thank you all for that. And I'm a big believer and advocate for parks. And, but as I, as I think about, you know, where we are as a city, and as I think about, as, as, as the president of City Council now, in this seat for, as president for two years, and now in this seat, I think about effectiveness. How can we be as effective as possible? And we're effective as possible by being strategic and making sure our priorities are in line. And we get our priorities in line through a really hard process of 13 really different individuals trying to come together and figure out what they're hearing from the community. And when we can do the hard work of figuring that out, we are successful almost every time. Now, there's always isolated situations where there's individuals from the community who say they want to push this forward. And that is what our democracy is all about, allowing those things to happen. I guess where I'm struggling here, and you guys heard me in the, in the council meeting, is I'm really struggling on how, we're, we're far behind in, in parks, and we know that. But I'm really struggling by how far we, behind we are in mobility and housing, and some of those other issues, and how much people agree in the city of Denver, how much we keep hearing about it. And so, I said, I wanted to get some more data, just for my district alone. Because what no one is talking about is what happens when you have a great proposition on the ballot around parks, and homeless, mental health services, caring for Denver, and, some would say, the, you know, the, the school ballot, the plan for the college ballot, and what, all these other things. So, I said, "Let's just put them head-to-head in a district, in District Nine." Very diverse district, 17 neighborhoods. And this is what, this is what happened. As I scroll, get it up. So, we had 265 people from 17 neighborhoods. 54%, and I asked those three questions. What would you support out of these three? 54% said caring for Denver. 31% said the Denver Public Parks Fund, which is before us today. And only 13% said the college affordability. The reality that is before us is that if we're not strategic as a city and as individuals, we will put competing issues on the ballot. And what I'm trying to, it's not whether we like this or that, people do not judge like that. They are in silos. They're gonna, they're gonna put things against each other. like that. They are in silos. They're gonna, they're gonna put things against each other. And my district just proved it. And so, will, will this pass, this council? Yeah, probably. It probably is going to go into the ballot, whether we delay, non-delay. But if this dies because of a lack of preparation, because we didn't have the hard conversations that everybody, I'm just telling you, as the president of council, I got the full language at the end of May. So how can I get my folks, all the people who are advocates on either side, on board with this and even understand where they are? I can't. So just because we didn't do that, and it fails, then we're back here again. And so, I love parks and think we should fund them, and think we can fund them. But we've got to have a much more inclusive process. And I know that's so frustrating for the Prab members who talks about it every year. I know that's frustrating for you. But it's also frustrating for me, as a president, who, as a former president, we have a president, as a former president, who wants and loves and think we should be doing more for parks. So we all find ourselves in a frustrating situation. So, that's where I'm at tonight. I cannot support this, even going to the voters. And the reason why I can't support this going to the voters, I, when we were in committee, I was going to support it, go into the voters and let them make a decision. But now I have more evidence that shows me that we're just piling up on this ballot, and there's a good chance that it might not succeed at fifty percent, unless someone can give me some really good data of a head-to-head with the other issues on the ballot. So I will, I'll not be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman New.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for bringing this bill forward. We really appreciate it, and I know our citizens will appreciate it. And in my district, we survey a lot, and we get a lot of comments and favorable opinions about our parks. They love our parks. And, and we're so glad that we just had a recent plan by the Greenway Foundation to help develop the Greenway, Cherry Creek Greenway, which is a spectacular plan. And so, but this plan is no different than a lot of our other capital improvement plans we have in the city, you know? We have a great plan, but we don't have any way to fund them. We have no money to implement. And that's the thing that's, I think, so attractive about this bill. Here is finally a dedicated revenue stream for our parks. Here are some plans we could have for our parks, and we'll know that we'll have some money to implement. So I think that it'll be very appealing to our voters. I think the two-and-a-half cents for ten dollars is not a lot to ask. And I think that they will be seen as a, as a good investment for one of our greatest assets in our city, our parks. So I think it'll have a great appeal. Some of the process questions we were talking about tonight, I think we could probably work out, whether you vote for this tonight or not. But I think they are important, but I think it shouldn't delay this bill tonight. So I'll be supporting this bill, and I just surely encourage all our residents to have that great opportunity to vote, to decide, make their own decision, and put it on that ballot in November and let them decide. It may have competing issues, it may be a problem, but the voters can decide. They're smart enough to figure this out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Sussman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I tend to be pretty practical about things like this, and thinking through some of my colleagues' comments, which I appreciate very much. I've enjoyed listening to all the different points of view. I don't think a week is going to change much. It's not enough time. It's going to still come back next week. They've got busy lives. I just, I just don't think that it makes sense just to give it one week. I, too, have had great pause on a bill that's going to require sales tax because of its regresiveness. It means that those of lesser income will pay a greater proportion of their income on the tax. But at the same time, I know, practically speaking, that getting a property tax is even, is so unpopular and is, you know, rarely ever can happen, although we have very low property taxes. The argument that visitors will pay most of that, all right, that's fine, but that doesn't mean that the, that the residents aren't going to pay more in taxes. It doesn't, it doesn't reduce their tax obligation. It just adds to the pool of money, just, you know, practically speaking. So, I think that, and our big decision is here, are we going to refer this to the ballot? And so I think if you refer to the ballot, then the citizens can make up their own minds if they want to spend their money in this way, if this is something that is of value to them. They're, yes, they are going to have a lot of things to choose among on the ballot, and many of them, not many, most of them, that requires some funding, require it in a sales tax. I don't know if you add up, if they all passed, what the increase in our sales tax would be, but it'd probably be noticeable. But anyway, just allow the citizens to decide. Do they want to spend their sales tax money this way? I wish there were more details about the criteria. I know we've had conversations about that, and the expenditures and how that's going to expend. I, I think that is one of the, the important things about this initiative that's lacking. But we had that dilemma with Green roofs. It needed a lot more detail. And we gathered quite a number of people from different points of view, certainly, lots of different perspectives. And we hammered out a lot of details in about six months, right? So the concern that, well, we're going to get the money right away, we won't have a way to spend it. I think that many of these details can be worked out as we go along. And so, I believe that it's probably a good, a good thing for us to put it on the ballot. I think parks do mean a lot to people. I trust the voter to understand what it means, and I trust the voter to know what the things they're going to be choosing between. And therefore, I'll probably, I will be supporting this this evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Flynn and Councilman Lopez, I'm going to go to Councilwoman Kneec, because she's, no, wait. All right, Councilman Flynn.
Okay. I don't know what your desire is here, but I would like to offer an amendment. I think we can get this voted on final and get it on the ballot tonight with a simple amendment that, for members to consider. I know some folks on this side of the dais already have indicated they would support it. Very simple amendment that adds city council adoption of the five-year plan as one of those sort of safety valves in looking at how the money is spent. If I could offer that now, or do you want to hear from?
Let's get through everybody, and then I'll come back to you. And can I get clarification from our attorney over there, that this amendment, we could still be voting on this at final if an amendment was passed, as Councilman Flynn is proposing?
It's within the title. Yes, that's right. It doesn't change the title or description.
Thank you very much. All right, Councilman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a point. I think, you know, you know, I just, I just wanted to make a point here. I mean, I think, you know, democracy's messy. Our ballot is going to be long anyway. You should see the ballots of other cities and how long they are. I think there's going to be an extraordinary amount of people who are going to be, you know, if, if the last three years, the last two, I don't know, it seems like three, geez Louise, if the last two years have really showed us anything and done anything, is agitate people into action. I think a lot of, you're going to start seeing a lot of people really paying a little bit more attention, I hope, I hope, please, to that ballot. And Denver's changing in a way that I think a lot of folks are, are showing, not just appreciation for, for our public assets, but wanting to take it to another level. And I think this is just smart and preparing, that we have the finances and we have the mechanisms in place to do just that. Our city's growing, our parks are going to be used, they're going to be activated, and I think this is a way to finance them. I'm, I'm good to go tonight, must be, but I'm very curious about these, the amendment, and I'm very curious about any other ideas move forward. But I don't want to, I don't want to belittle our voters. I don't want to belittle the ballot. I think folks are able to read through a ballot and do it in a way that are, that's intelligent, and do it in the best interest of something other than themselves. I have a lot of faith in that, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Kneec.
Thank you, Mr. President, for your forbearance earlier. And then I also want to thank the folks who came today. I was somewhat surprised. I think I've been out of town since last Wednesday, and the only folks I had heard from up until that point were parks advocates. And so I wasn't totally prepared for the number of concerns and questions and other things that emerged over the last, you know, week, and caught up on those. And so I don't like to bring up new ideas on the floor. It's not ideal. But I, I benefit from hearing this public debate. Councilwoman Sussman's questions were the ones that prompted for me some of those lessons we learned from the housing fund, that frankly, until we're having the debate, I didn't get to. And so that's the value of the public debate, and because it brings up creative thinking and it triggers things. And so, you know, I apologize to my, to my colleagues, because when you, you know, you ask your colleagues where are they at and how do they feel about things, and some of these questions, I didn't have fully formulated until I was listening and engaging, because it came up here at the end. So that said, I am supporting this measure tonight. And I want to just describe the two things, because I really respect Council President, Councilman Brooks, it's going to take a while to get the titles right. Councilman Brooks is weighing of several different priorities. And so for me, just to say how I went through them on the housing question, this would be a different discussion if we didn't have a path towards a three-hundred-million-dollar housing investment. Is it, is it enough? Is it everything we need? Perhaps not, for sure not. But we, I knew that we were on a path to a proposal that I could probably live with if a few details are hammered out correctly, before I learned about this proposal. So to me, it wasn't, it wasn't that this leaped ahead of housing. Housing was on a path, you know, we have, we have a significant portion, and it's on a path to being doubled. And I knew that at the point at which this arose. So, so it would be a different debate if we maybe did need to look at the sales tax for housing. And, but we were on another path by the time I heard about this. Second, on transportation, you know, we haven't talked much about the fact that there is a state measure on the ballot. That measure passes, it's going to bring some share-back revenue to Denver directly, as well as the potential to get some state-funded transportation within our jurisdiction paid for. Again, will it solve all of it? No. What if it doesn't pass? Well, if it doesn't pass, that same sales tax capacity exists for us to consider for local use. And we're no worse off than we would have been if the state measure passes. So that's one consideration, just about the transportation piece and the sales tax. So I also continue to hear that the administration is working on a package of other funding ideas. And I haven't seen that, but, you know, perhaps there are more creative ideas coming. But I do think that those are the trifecta of growth. So when I hear from the community about needs, housing, transportation, and parks and open space, for the healthy, balanced community that we need, I am thinking about those other pieces. So for folks who care about those, I just want you to know that I did think about them and weigh them coming to my decision on supporting this. The other thing I'll just say on the personal side is that, you know, I have been working with a community in Globeville to create an open space for eight years. And in part, it's taken time because it's a brownfield. And newsflash, that's where parks are going to come from. They're going to come from places that are dirty or used for something else. And that's frankly where they've come from in the past. Many of our parks were, you know, dumping areas or, you know, landfills. So it's not, what's new is, what's old is new again, which is that it is the land that is in rough shape. But the second reason was, this community had to fundraise. So the nonprofits are out there using settlement dollars and grant dollars, and they've only been able to fundraise for one phase of a multi-phase project. So it's not going to get funded. There's internal sidewalks that would make it more accessible for the disabled. What's not going to get funded is, you know, the play area for children to have rocks to interact with. So it will be a very passive open space, which is an asset, and this community has fought for it. But those later phases are not yet funded. And so the very first community-led, you know, as an out-large person, I work on policy a lot, I don't work a lot on projects. But the very first and primary community-led, place-based project I worked on, and am still working on, is only, you know, a third or half-funded. And it's because there is not this capital. And then the other thing, you know, in thinking about, I, I do believe that we, I believed that given a little more time, we might be able to find a few word changes that might give folks some more comfort, that they had been a part of shaping this. I think there's value in people feeling like they shaped something. But I accept my colleagues' feedback, that they're not interested in that delay, and it's, at least by my count. And so there's no need to force that. I will just say, though, that in my mind, the lack of the wording tweak doesn't relieve us of the responsibility. So when I judged a poster contest for all Latino and African-American youth that participated in this poster conference defining neighborhood to them, every single one of them put in a park or an open space. They didn't put houses, they didn't put schools, they really, when they, they define neighborhood, each of them. So, so I believe this is in the heart of the youth of color that I've worked with, and I think it's our challenge. And I frankly think, you know, as the sponsor, if, you know, if we don't take the delay, then it's going to have to work three times harder to show folks how the, the practice will come into this, and how those voices will come in that haven't been at these parks tables, and how we make Prab inclusive without changing the structure of it. And so we got some work to do. I, I, so, so the lack of the wording change doesn't relieve us of the responsibility. I'm committed to trying to bring ideas to the table on how to do that. I've named some technical challenges I think we're going to get over. I think this would be better, maybe if we had a plan for year one and plan two. But, but I, because I have lived the need, and in the very communities that folks are concerned about being underrepresented, and I've, I've interacted with those communities, I believe that there is a need and that they will benefit from this. And so I will be supporting it without a delay, since I don't think that's the will. But I do appreciate that humility is one factor in leadership, but boldness is another. And I think that boldness doesn't always come with perfection. But hopefully it comes with growth, and, and, you know, maybe we wouldn't find ourselves here again. But that, if, if we do get a lesson from the voters, we'll learn it the hard way. And if they grace us with their permission, then we will do the very best we can to make up for anything we lacked on this front end. So, thank you, Mr. President. I will be happily supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Flynn.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer this amendment and just explain what it does. Very simple amendment that will ensure that tonight isn't the last time that the city council has any more than just a glance at the way these funds would be spent going down the line. It would, it would require that instead of just the five-year plan being submitted to us, that the Parks and Rec Department would work with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, as they always do, in developing the plan, including a requirement for at least one public hearing, and then submitting it to the council for our adoption, as we adopt neighborhood plans. So there's already, there's already precedent for how we do these things. And it means that once this goes out the door tonight, we actually get to play, play another role in how the funds from the special revenue fund will be expended broadly, broadly. We're not going to dictate projects or whatnot, but the way we'd adopt a neighborhood plan. So it might even be possible, after we adopt this, Councilman Clark, that, that the hillsides at Ruby Hill Park will finally get mowed. Inside baseball. So, so I would like to offer the following motion, a following amendment. I move that Council Bill, what is this?
Six forty-one.
Council Bill six forty-one be amended in the following particulars. And I'm using the, the version of the bill that is in our Granicus system, because the pagination is a little different on the printout. On page five, at line thirty-four, after the word charter, delete the words, must submit a five-year plan to the city council and the Denver Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and insert the following language, shall work with the Denver Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to hold no less than one public hearing, and submit a five-year plan for the approval of the city council. That's the, and that's the end of the amendment.
I just want to check with our council secretary. Is there anything else we need to do for Councilman? Is there anything else we need to do for Councilman Flynn to get that amendment on the floor?
No, let me start.
Second.
Wait one second. Sorry, I got something.
Hold on, just saying it while technology catches up.
Sorry, I got a motion.
Councilwoman Sussman, are you in the queue to talk about the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Could I, because members don't have, Mr. President, because members don't have the text in front of them, can I read the paragraph as it is now so they understand the change?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. The paragraph right now is Paragraph I, and it reads, "Planning. Within one year of the adoption of this Article 12, and every five years thereafter, the manager of Parks and," actually says park, "manager of Parks and Recreation, as designated in accordance with Section 2 dash 2.4.2 of the Charter, must submit a five-year plan to the city council and the Denver Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on the planned revenue uses in the Parks Trails Open and Open Space Fund." So what we're removing is the clause that just says they must submit the plan to us, and we're substituting the language that says they shall work with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to hold at least one public hearing and then submit it to the council for our adoption. So that's the only change.
And do you have any comments that you want to make about the amendment beyond reading it?
Yes, Mr. President, just to reinforce that what I've heard tonight from many of the members is that there's a need for, to, there's a need for someone to oversee and to have more voice in how these funds are spent. Having a public hearing in this room, having a public hearing at Prab allows the public to have more input into how that's spent. So we don't just send it out the door tonight and never see it again. And I think that would help to address some of the equity issues and help ensure that a public voice is put into this five-year plan as it's, as it's re-adopted every five years. I don't see how any member of council could oppose giving ourselves more authority in this area. Thank you. How do you oppose that?
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Madam Secretary, so we do have the motion on the floor, and it's seconded. Are we all good for me to move to questions?
Yes.
Okay, questions on the amendment. Councilwoman Sussman, or comments on the amendment, sorry.
I sort of want to redirect to our city attorney, to our legislative council, because I heard two things there. One was actual language to write in approval, but then the intent was adoption. I don't know if there's a difference, but I'm worried that if we get to a point where we formally adopt a plan, does it now become binding in such a way if it's all articulating very specific projects and that we could only deviate if we amend that plan? Because it's not going to be recommendation, I mean advisory in the normal sense, I don't think.
So I, my perspective is, is a concern more about the charter and that it vests a great deal of discretion with the Parks and Recreation. And so I think the best possible way to achieve what council is doing is to achieve it through an amendment to the charter that would go into this bill. But, you know, doing it on the floor, I think, can be difficult because we haven't had an opportunity to go back and look at the language in the, in the charter and make sure that we're not conflicting. You have two issues here. One is approval of a plan by council, but then also adding in process that doesn't exist in the charter right now.
And a quick clarification on that, because I was told because of Tabor, we cannot amend the charter in another way as part of this bill, because you had mentioned about putting it in the bill in a, as a charter change, but that's not allowed per Tabor, because then it's not single subject.
I'm not sure where you got that information, but I, I think that this, the substance of what we're talking about tonight could be put in this bill and not run afoul of Tabor.
All right. Councilwoman Sussman, does anything else?
So I, I'll, my question to Councilman Flynn, so is your intent to really have that direct action over parks, or would you really just rather have the formal public input? And could we just do it with a required public hearing and not an actual adoption?
No, the, the motion, and I'm, I'm not really keen on taking, taking out the council vote on it, but for the, I would keep in the approval of city council. I don't see why we would hold a public hearing and then not a vote.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Councilwoman Sussman.
Okay, it's my practicalness coming back to me. You know, we had the ballot issue on marijuana several times, we had the ballot issue on green roofs, and we did take time to look at it, to make a plan, to execute the plan. And the council has the ability to change things six months after any ballot issue anyway. And I think that a lot of the processes that we established, both in marijuana, in all the marijuana bills and the green roof bills, were probably even more detailed than your amendment has suggested about council, council's ability to alter something. And I think our concerns about worrying about the criteria and how the money's going to spend, how, are things that will be worked out afterwards. And I would not want to limit what I am hoping will be a representative committee from all sides, looking at how to implement this in the best way, to this kind, to just this way of encouraging or of allowing council to engage, because council's going to be able to engage no matter what. And this amendment might create a process that a group that we got together to discuss wouldn't want. And so we don't need to make this happen now, because we can make it happen later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ortega.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the major difference between this and those other processes that you spoke of, Councilwoman Sussman, is that currently, the manager of Parks and Rec under our charter has sole authority to make these decisions. And what we're talking about is giving council and the community a voice in that process for how we define those priorities with these new funds. And so I want to speak in support of the amendment that is basically asking for this body to approve the plan and that we have the public hearing at Prab and the public hearing before city council that gives voice to the community who has not been privy to being involved in this process and being able to weigh in on what those priorities should be and looking at some of the criteria that should be in, in that plan. And so I, I think it makes perfect sense. It's no different than when we adopted our housing fund and said we need a housing plan by which we will set priorities in terms of how those dollars are going to be spent. And this is, this is very similar to that. So I, I think this makes perfect sense, and I think it gives even more confidence to the voters that we have a more clearly defined process that they get to have some input into.
All right. Councilwoman Koenig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak to the amendment for a minute, and particularly the concern, plans are not, they are not binding in the sense that it is not a list of funded projects. And so to the extent that, as we've learned, you know, whether it's an area plan or whether it's the housing plan, they're aspirational. And so I, I can't imagine that there'd be a way to violate it, because you have to report on it, you can, you know, in the annual reporting, but there's, there's nothing binding in the plan legally speaking. And so I think that it's a good way to counterbalance the lack of certainty upfront with a aspirational approval process that says our aspirations are this much on purchasing land, this much on maintenance. And then, you know, if it turns out that there's an amazing parcel, the manager maintains her charter authority, she will be required to report to us under this. And so you can say, here's what didn't go the way you expected, and here's why. And it just, it just, I think to me, creates the kind of, you know, transparency this body often requests. And, and because there is so much less detail in the process here, to me, it seems like the simplest fix that we can do on the floor to just create a little more certainty in the process. And for me, it was important in working with Councilman Flynn on, on this language, that it moves Prab up. In the current language, Prab receives the plan. This says the department shall work with Prab to develop the plan. And so that's the other component that I think is, is helpful in, in making it more community co-led and then council check-in at the end. So I'll be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Espinoza.
Yeah, it was, my, my concern was that Parks already started operates, I hope, with our aspirations in mind, and that's what Game Plan is. And so my, my thought was this would be more granular, more use of funds, sort of as we know things were coming in. That's why we would have a sort of dialogue with people more about projects. But if it's not that, I certainly have no reservations about getting to an approval. But I do think that, and this is going to really sound distorted from my own sort of feeling, but it respects the charter, maybe what we do is we sort of put ourselves in a planning board role in that we just actually make a recommendation to the manager of Parks with an approval, approval to comment or deny, based on what we get out of that public hearing, because it is the manager of Parks purview. That's just food for thought, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Espinoza. Councilman Herndon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just, I'm trying to understand if, because as Councilwoman Koenig talked about, it's not binding. So couldn't council just do this without even adding an amendment? Like if we are concerned about the direction that the funding will go to, can't council in just some capacity issue a statement or something? That's what I'm, I'm trying to understand, like, the, the purpose of the amendment. And help me out, Councilman Flynn, if I'm just, if I'm just missing a key component? Because as, because as I was, I was sitting there thinking, well, what happens if we disagree with the recommendations of the Parks manager? And Councilwoman Koenig answered that question and said, well, it's non-binding. So adding this to the, the language, well, is there something that council can just do right now? And I, I think Councilwoman Sussman was kind of implying that. I'm just, just thinking out loud, I don't know if you have response to that.
Councilman Herndon, thank you. Excuse me. This process, this amendment, rather, is modeled after, Councilwoman Koenig and I were conferring here earlier, it's modeled after exactly how we do neighborhood plan approval for the housing plan, which came to us for approval. So it's exactly the same process as that. If, if the manager, no, it's not binding. If we don't do this, then there is no mechanism for public input, other than, I imagine, the manager would come up with a process under her rulemaking. I can't imagine that there would be no public process. But this kind of sets the framework in which that would occur properly, under the charter, through the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and then come to us in the way the housing plan came to us for our adoption or not. We don't change any of it. As Councilwoman Koenig said, it's aspirational, it's not, doesn't list projects. So we don't change any of it. Our option is only to vote yea or nay on it. It ensures that there is an open and public input process into that plan. That's the purpose of it. And if we don't pass it, then if we don't, if we see something in the plan that's given to us, then our recourse is, you know, to shoot off an email to the manager and say, gee, we don't like that. And, but it's not out in the public. I would rather have that occur in the public than not.
I, I do think Councilwoman Sussman was, I, I see her side, but I appreciate, I appreciate you, you explained that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Herndon. Seeing no other comments, I will just add that I think, I think you, and I want to thank Councilman Flynn, Councilwoman Koenig, Councilwoman Ortega, I don't know who all came up with this down to that, you have done a fantastic job, hit the nail on the head, just like Game Plan. And, and we have Game Plan right now for a $78 million budget. We're going to add $45 million to have a plan specific to that that goes through an established process that we have for plan adoption and allows everyone in this room to come back and to, to come back to this microphone and say, are we on mark, are we not? Did we miss the equity piece? Did we do all of that? I think is really a fantastic compromise. I want to thank you for that, and I will be happy to support it. With that, Madam Secretary, can we do roll call on the amendment?
Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
Lopez.
Aye.
New.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Sussman.
No.
Black.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Espinoza.
No.
Mr. President.
Aye. Madam Secretary, please close the voting and announce the results.
Sorry, one person is, I'm sorry, Councilman Lopez.
Councilman Lopez?
Aye.
All right, now close the voting and announce the results.
11 ayes, 2 nays.
11 ayes, 2 nays. The amendment passes. Councilman Herndon, can you please make a motion to pass this bill as amended?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Council Bill 641 be placed upon final, as amended, be placed upon final consideration and to pass.
It has been moved and seconded. I think that we have had a lot of discussion for tonight. Is there anyone who just can't live without us going straight to a vote? Councilman Brooks.
You know, it's not going to be 20 minutes, like some of my friends. But I just, I just wanted to explain to the voters or my constituents right now, I did vote for the amendment, because I think, you know, it speaks to equity, much more community input should this pass. But because of the process, I cannot support this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Brooks. Madam Secretary, roll call.
I'm sorry, Chris.
Oh, Councilman Herndon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I, I was, everybody else spoke, and it's just, and I will, I'll be briefer than others. I, I appreciate the, the sentiment. And I can tell you right now, I think about multiple neighborhoods in my district where we have concerns about funding for parks, and that is a reality. I wish this process was more thorough. No one discounts this need for parks, but no one discounts the need for sidewalks, no one discounts the need for other ask. And I wish we would, as a body, have done that, because I, I do look at Councilman Brooks and says, something's going to get dropped because of this ask. And my fear is that it's going to be something that we cannot, we can, we don't have another way to fund. Like, we're funding parks right now. And is it enough? No. But we're funding parks right now. There's some other ask on the ballot that the only mechanism we will have to fund them is through going to the voters. And so something I fear that's crucial to the city's progress is going to be, is going to be dropped. And so I wish we would have taken that into consideration before doing this. That being said, we're not approving it, because if it was an improvement, I would be a no. Not to say that no one loves parks more than I do, with, I think about taking my son to parks frequently. But I, I just really hope that as voters, we take a hard look at this come November, because it is something that there, there will be some, it will be an interesting time for the next few months. And so I, I, I struggled with this, because I've heard both sides of a very, very thorough, thorough debate. But sending this to the voters for a question, for them to decide in November, I think this is worthwhile. But recognize the repercussions of each vote you make, because you will be making multiple votes come November. So I will be supporting this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Herndon. Seeing no other comments, Madam Secretary, roll call.
This is to pass as amended.
Yes, that is the motion on the floor.
Black.
Aye.
Brooks.
Nay.
Espinoza.
Aye.
Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
Lopez.
Aye.
New.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Sussman.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Aye. Madam Secretary, please close the voting and announce the results.
We're missing one.
Somebody hasn't pushed their button.
12 ayes, 1 nay.
12 ayes, 1 nay. Council Bill 641 has passed as amended on Monday, August 13th, 2018. Council will hold a required public hearing on Council Bill 18-0617, changing the zoning classification of 2500 East 44th Avenue, 4348 Combine Street, 4301 and 4349 Elizabeth Street in the Illyria Swansea neighborhood. Any protest against Council Bill 18-0617 must be filed with the council office no later than Monday, August 9th. Seeing no other business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.